Ms. Lewis, was that called up?
No.
You ready Rodney?
Just went over the office.
Good morning. Let's call Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting to order November 17th, nine o'clock. At this time, we'd have Mr. Craig Slay. Would you do our invocation for us, please?
Father, we want to pause and come before you humbly now and acknowledge that we need your presence with us today. We thank you for being here, for your power, your provision, your blessing on our county. Father, I thank you for these gentlemen, for their commitment to service to this county. I pray, Father, that you will enlighten them today with wisdom, that you'll give them discernment. Father, that they will make decisions that are in keeping with your will and in accordance with the best interest of all the citizens of our county. Father, thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. Father, thank you for the high price has been paid for our freedoms. I pray, Father, that those sacrifices will not be in vain, that those people who have made the sacrifice, even the ultimate sacrifice, will be blessed, and that you would bless their families in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you Craig. No public comments or recognition. This time, we have all business. Minutes approval of October 15th, October 30th, and November 3rd, 2014 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion, but I only have a copy of 15th and 30th.
Oh God, I just can't find it printed out.
Motion to approve.
Thanks.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda items.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries. Discussion of AMR ambulance services. Is that going to be Bob? Come on up, Bob. Brett and Bob, come on up.
As y'all know, we met with the fire chiefs earlier in the week, both municipal and volunteer chiefs, to discuss issues that they had had previously or ongoing. And we've decided, and with y'all's approval, to narrow the group down from 21 to a workable number, somewhere around eight and twelve, to discuss these matters with you guys. As we continue on with the discussions are continuing, and we're still meeting with the ambulance service and deciding, you know, what they can bring forward to make the contract better as we continue. One of the things that we had discussed, and I think was discussed with some of y'all, was bringing in two basic units, which is basic EMT units, to alleviate some of the transfer calls, the number of transfers. And I think that's basically where we're at right now, is bringing those two units in, seeing what kind of impact those have on the numbers or the times of the calls, and then getting more detailed as we continue forward, both with the fire chiefs at AMR and with you guys, on, you know, what is feasible, you know, service-wise versus cost-wise, and, you know, that kind of stuff. Several details, you know, that were brought up, you know, and everybody's trying to operate from a realistic number. I mean, you know, we're not going, they're not going to come in and ask for, you know, a dozen ambulances, but something that will alleviate some of the problems and, you know, both be effective for all of us, or all of Rankin County.
Bob, discuss the, you said two, two units that you said that would be transport vehicles? Is that correct?
Right. And we may want to bring out a, Brett, unless you want to talk to him about it, or one of the AMR guys.
We can bring, Stan, you want to come up?
Basically, the gist of the BLS trucks, the non-emergency transports that we have every day in Rankin County, from nursing home to nursing home, dialysis patients, stuff like that. It's not going to tie up a emergency transport.
It's, it's a dialysis patients, transfers to hospital, 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 nursing home, hospital, hospital back to nursing home. And I know we, you know, of course, we could, you know, get as in detail as you guys want to about it, just depends on how much time y'all want to take. But, you know, the impact for us is, you know, in talking with AMR, you know, whenever we take a emergency service ambulance out of the rotation, whether it's, you know, from hospital to hospital, or on an emergency call up to the hospital itself, whichever hospital it is, that's outside Rankin County especially, you know, the downtime is really impacting, you know, getting those units back into service. You know, through no fault, you know, and we can say, you know, through no fault of our own, but, you know, it's one of those cases that we talked about before, you know, the ambulance is being used, as well as the fire departments, much more than it has been historically in the past. And, you know, AMR's in the business to, to make money, so, and, you know, they're looking to transport those patients. You know, on the fire side, you know, we're getting impacted more because people are using the services more. I mean, we're transporting people, you know, when they call, you know, and we've had everything from toothache to fever over the past three or four days, you know, those people have to be treated. You know, we can't just turn our back on them, and, you know, we have to wait for ALS unit to come on there. Stan, you want to get more detailed or explain?
If I have any more detailed questions.
You know, we've just, you know, I think, I've talked to a couple of you briefly about the idea of using the basic life support transfer trucks. We did it back in the Rankin Medical Center days, and then as the healthcare environment's changing and becoming more and more taxed every single day because of some different regulations that have come down, we've found that, you know, there's constant ER overcrowding, which ties up our ambulances for hours upon hours, which alleviates the possibility of them getting back to where they need to be quicker. So what we did in Heinz County is, we tried a pilot program where we changed the ordinance and amended the contract to allow for basic life support ambulances to transfer very stable, non-emergency, wound care patients, dialysis, discharges from the hospital to nursing home, patients that really need nothing more than just a caring hand and help to get back to where they came from. It has impacted the system over there tremendously. And so what we'd like to do is extend that same to Rankin County. We've sat and talked to the fire guys, Brett and Bob and I have talked, talked to Craig about it in a meeting last week. It would take about 12 to 15 calls a day out of the mix over here. So those 12 to 15 would be done by basic life support trucks, which puts paramedic trucks where they need to be. You know, sitting at stations, sitting on the street corner, waiting for the next emergency call. Paramedics right now are really and truly a very finite resource. They're, they're going away. And so we're having to work tirelessly and come up with new ideas outside the box every single day on how to combat the increased use of ambulance with a decreased use in the paramedic staff to put on them.
Stan, how, how does this alleviate the problem of ambulances being tied up at emergency room?
These trucks, these basic transfer trucks, they don't go through the emergency room. So these are ones that can empty those beds upstairs that our patients in the ER are waiting on. You know, we'll go to the ER now, and there's patients that are in the waiting room that have been there 10 hours, 12 hours, whatever the case may be. Our ambulances on average are there about 58 minutes is really on a good day, 58 minutes per trip. There, there was some cases last week where we were there three-plus hours with patients on our stretcher waiting to be seen. Part of the reason is every hospital in the area is being overtaxed. They're operating at a 100-plus percent capacity. So while they're waiting on us to discharge patients from the floor so they can turn those beds around and move patients up, well, we can't do it because we're stuck in the ER with patients on our stretcher. This solves that problem, because we can put up these basic transfer trucks that by ordinance, we don't allow to run emergency calls. They're strictly there to get patients out of the hospitals. And they're also there to take these patients to dialysis and wound care and whatever the basic level, you know.
And that's, that's usually done, excuse me, that's usually done by regular ambulances?
It is. Right now, it's done by paramedic level ambulances.
Okay.
That's what the contract requires there.
Okay.
When you say that all of them are operating in 100% capacity, and whatever board it is that issues certificates of need, is that not happening because of the shortage of nurses and doctors and available staff, similar to the problems you're having coming up?
I think it's a universal problem, and I think if you dig into it, you'll find that that's some of it. You've got some hospitals in the Jackson area that have certain specialty lines of business. You know, over here, like, for instance, Crossgate River Oaks, they don't do the interventional cath labs. They don't do the interventional neurological stuff. So if you're having a heart attack or a stroke, you're going to Jackson, and you're going to one of the three primary, three or four primary big hospitals. Well, that's, you know, on top of everybody else around the state that's going to the only Level 1 trauma center at university. They can't deny a transfer in because they're, they are the only Level 1. And all the heart patients, all the stroke patients, they're all competing to go to the same place, or trying to go to the same place, which backs up the ER for the clinic stuff that people come in for. It's really, we could sit and talk for hours upon hours and, you know, about what, what complicates the problem over and over, but it really and truly is, you know, you've got a lot of people now that didn't have insurance, that now they do, and they're using it. And it's just a constant overcrowding problem. So we're trying to come up with ideas and ways that we can help impact response times and wait times and the whole nine yards for the people that we serve out in the communities. And it has, it's been a true blessing to the system in Heinz County. Of course, that's a much more major impact because there's a lot more transfers over there than there is here, but percentage-wise, it's about the same. There's about 26% non-emergency transfers over here versus 74, 73% emergency calls in Rankin County, and it should have the same impact here.
If we make this change to the contract, will the individuals that use your service get charged the same amount?
Absolutely not. It's significantly cheaper for the consumer to go by basic level service.
Well, I guess you mentioned whenever the ambulance service was here before. Do you know why the board supervisors did away with it, start with?
Um, it was when they, the, the board sold out the ambulance service from the hospital. Actually, it wasn't the board, it was HMA. At that time, went with Acadian, I believe, is, is who took it over from there.
So the board never ran it, knew it?
The board ran it when it was a county-based hospital, years ago, and we had it then.
So whenever they sold the hospital, that dissolved it then?
Correct.
Craig, have you looked at everything on that?
Yeah, if I may, Stan, I was going, I've looked at, they've made a, an amendment proposal to the contract that allows for the use of the BLS support. And we've gone over that with the guys. This appears to be the only change that's on the table at present.
Absolutely, the only one.
There, there may be some additional work, not necessarily from us, but probably AMR, and it may be at the state legislature level, looking at some other options that may give us some relief down the line. Obviously, the state laws will have to be changed in some respect as it relates to how the emergency response is able to deal with individuals who are calling in for emergencies. There may be some relief that can be given there. You heard Stan refer to the system being overtaxed. So our, I guess our hope is that our state legislature will at least be open to a discussion about how to get on top of some of the, what I'll call misuse of the system, that may help us. So there may be some impact later on the contract, other provisions of the contract, but at present, what is before you is a request to move from solely ALS support to BLS included in that, with the understanding that it is for non-emergency scheduled calls.
We'd also like to, you know, from the county side, make sure that we retain the right to go back and negotiate with him on the things that we have in work right now, such as, you know, the percentages of call times and things that we've all, I mean, we've, we've been discussing it, but we're trying to narrow the group down and also the discussion down so we can have a workable document to present to you guys, instead of, you know, being all over the place. You know, we're, we're trying to narrow everything down. So when we come up here, it's not a, you know, a four-hour meeting like several that we've had that...
And if I may jump in on, and piggyback with Bob, say, we're coming to you now with this request because it seems to be a reasonable request. It's, apparently it's working well in other counties. My observation from the chiefs that I, from the meeting that I was in with the chiefs, is that they are very much on board with the suggestion to do this. I saw no opposition of any kind. I believe that played out in the additional meetings that you've had. So we're coming to you now with this suggestion because there appears to be really good buy-in on this, and we'd like to go ahead and implement it so we can see if it's going to work for us like it did in other counties.
You said, though, you asked, Jay asked a question about the charge, and you said it wouldn't be, wouldn't be the same. What, what would it be? What kind of difference were we talking about?
Oh, you're roughly $300 cheaper per trip, but that's, that's kind of, when you talk about what's on our charge schedule versus what we get reimbursed for, it's two completely different things. About 90%, 90-plus percent of the patients that we transport in the non-emergency basis have some form of Medicare, Medicare HMO, Medicaid, Medicaid HMO. They tell us what they're going to pay us, and we can't balance bill the patient. So it's significantly less than what's on, even on our charge sheet.
All right, thank you.
So do we have...
Do we not need to address all this at once rather than piecemeal it together? I mean, we still need to address our runtimes, don't we?
How, how soon are you looking at possibly, what's, what's your next, I know you're, you're talking about bringing this down to a smaller group, but what is your timeframe?
My target is to have something with y'all by the first meeting in December or the second meeting in December, the second meeting being the, the last. Once again, one of the issues is, you know, getting, getting the guys in here, the availability of them. We've got another meeting tonight, as a matter of fact, with the chiefs, and I'm sure it'll be discussed there. Tonight's the night, I believe, Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, tonight's the night that they're supposed to bring their representatives or, outside the municipalities of each district, on the volunteer districts are supposed to have a representative that they're voting on to represent that district at the meetings, to speak on their behalf, you know, with us.
Like Delta and...
Yeah, all those different districts, yes.
How did, did I understand you say you've had a meeting with volunteer chiefs as well?
Yes.
And how, how was it received by those?
I would say very well received, you know, and everybody's got, you know, the issues, and they understand, you know, one of the, one of the big problems is the way the, the contract is written now is the percentage-based responses. And, you know, and I could tell you right now, I believe with 100% certainty, that we're all against the percentage-based, you know, response times. Yeah, and just a few other things, you know, that they would like to see, you know, and when I say they, you know, there's not a difference between what the volunteer chiefs are asking than the paid chiefs are asking. I mean, that, you know, it affects both departments equally. So whether it's a municipality or a volunteer agency, you know, they all fall under the same guidelines and the same contract. The contractual obligations are just as good or just as bad for the municipalities as they are for the volunteers. So they're, you know, it impacts each one equally, you know, as far as their, you know, I hate to say this, but, but as far as, you know, their residents, you know, complaining to them, and then in turn complaining to you, or, you know, to us, and then to you, you know, we're all getting it from the, the same. I mean, it, it does not matter. So...
But the immediate plan to implement the, the other trucks into the system?
Yeah, we'd like to do that.
They'll feel the impact of that in the rural areas of the county as well?
Yes, yes.
Immediate, pretty much immediately, it sounds like.
Yeah, that's, that's the hope. And, you know, of course, it's all theoretical hyperbole until, you know, we start seeing some hard numbers.
Well, I would think it'd work both ways. I mean, if it would free an ambulance up to respond, even if in the rural area quicker, as well as, I mean, it's just more...
Just gives us more...
More, I guess, maneuverability, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And like I said, and I mean, Brett's here with me, we've had the meetings, and, and, you know, and if I miss something, and I mean, even Chief Welborn, you know, from Flowwoods back there, you know, they're, they're pretty much all speaking on the same voice, you know, as far as contracts and the needs, and, you know, we've got them written down. And basically, what we're trying to do is narrow those needs or desires down. Talk to AMR and see how feasible it is. And, you know, if we can't agree, then we're going to come to you guys and say, hey, this, this is what we want. This is what AMR agrees to. Let's find some kind of meeting, you know, what's feasible with, you know, the service versus the fee.
Well, I commend you on your work. It's been a long time coming. Stan, thank you for AMR and your willingness to participate in this and improve service for all of Rankin County. I think we're on the right track.
I appreciate it. And once again, you know, if anybody wants to come to the meetings, you know, we're having them at the O C, and it's, it's pretty much round robin, battle royal when we're, when we're down there. So if y'all want to come, you know, feel free to come on down there if anybody wants to come.
And when is that meeting?
Uh, well, we're going to have, yeah, we're going to have one again tonight at 6:30.
I got something on my calendar.
But what we're trying to do is every time we have a meeting, it's just range for the next meeting. So it'll be set pretty close. And like I said, as quick as we can get this wrapped up, I'd like to get it wrapped up.
Would you, I don't know, I think you, I don't know if you have, but I don't think I've seen it. Would you keep us updated on the dates? Because I'd like to attend, I wouldn't mind attending. Now, did you, have, have you gotten participation from, some from all the chiefs, from all the volunteers? I mean, okay, so we don't have a little hole over here that's not showing up?
We've sent invitations out to every chief.
I mean, have, are you getting, are they showing up?
All but, I think, three or four, three chiefs were not present. But talking to them, and I'll give you an example. If the, and one of them that I know was not there the other night, the chief from Florence was not there, but the chief from Starr and the chief from, clearly were. So they're going to talk to the chief from Florence and the boss. And they need to, they, they're the ones that are tasked with putting together a representative. So all those guys have to get together. And once again, you know, we sent out the invitation. If they don't want to participate...
Well, I understand, but that's the reason I was asking, because that way, if they're not, you say, well, I can come back with, well, you should have been at the meeting. You know, this, put in your input. It's what we're looking for.
We have and will continue to express an open invitation to them. Because, you know, and like we've said, and, you know, it's incumbent upon them to come into the meeting to have that voice to express, you know, their concern. If there's something specific that we're missing from one jurisdiction that is unique to that jurisdiction, they need to come and tell us. But so far, across the county, it's been, you know, in each district, and like I said, we're only missing, you know, three chiefs at the next one. Then ones that'll be there one week will be there the next. So it kind of rotates, because remember, you know, the overwhelming majority of these guys are volunteers. So, you know, they're taking up their time to come to, come to these meetings. It's, it's easy for us to schedule a meeting and be there, and, you know, but, you know, these guys, you know, are volunteering their time. We try to do it as convenient for them as possible.
Yeah, okay. I'll be there tonight.
Aye, call him, bro.
Craig, with what Jay said, as far as piecemealing or whatever, what, what are you thinking as far as this added advantage right now versus?
Well, now that Bob sort of clarified that he's, he's trying to push it on a little more quickly than, than I had originally anticipated, quite honestly, I felt like it was going to be a lot of moving parts on trying to get all of the issues that the various departments were going to have with other parts of the contract. And we had such good understanding, and it seemed to me to be good buy-in on this BLS portion of it, that it just made sense to break it up and bring that portion forward and get that handled, if the board was of mind. Notice it's on here as discussion only. Nobody was anticipating necessarily that y'all would be prepared to take any action. So it is discussion. We do have the language of the proposed amendment ready to go. If you decide you want to move in that direction today, we can implement it. We can make that happen fairly quickly. So that was the thought process.
Do we need, do we need to do that for the different municipalities that have put out requests for, for bids? Do we wait till that's finalized, so that they can be included?
Well, actually, the, the agreement that is before us is county-wide, and it's going to affect us in our operations county-wide. What the municipalities are doing is kind of, it's a separate process that may have an impact on us at some point. But I think if, Stan, jump in here at any point, I, I think the reality is that if, if a municipality or more than one decide to go it alone, then what we're doing today in the amendment of the contract is going to have to be substantially reconsidered. I mean, at that point, AMR's got to think about what, what sort of business model they're, they're looking at. So I, I don't know that that necessarily needs to be something that we wait on as RFP process. I'll tell you that my observation is, after hearing the discussions, that the municipalities have got an awful lot to think about in terms of the current environment of emergency response, the, the current insurance environment, the taxing of the system. The point being this, I'm not 100% sure that, that it's really predictable as to what's going to happen. If you start setting up little islands of emergency response within the county, I can just see that being problematic. In other words, I'm not sure that even if they're going out for proposals, I'm not, I'm not 100% confident that, that they're necessarily going to act on it when they start looking at what they're dealing with.
Is there any reason we, do y'all see any reason we wouldn't go ahead and start this? It looks like it's a...
How's it going to impact our runtimes? Is it going to positively impact our runtimes?
Well, that's, that's my point, is what he keeps saying it is.
What's it done in Heinz?
In Heinz County, the area that we measured the most were the rural parts of the community. We went on average, our contract over there is for 85% compliance in the unincorporated zones. We went from an average of 84, 85.79 month over month to 96.97 month over month. And we've turned in response compliance numbers in the unincorporated parts of Heinz County above 95 since this has started July of the night. So it significantly impacts it.
If it's going to speed it up in the, I mean, if it helps, helps one, you know, makes a difference in one...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I just knew there were several issues that were needing to be addressed, and so that's...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, most of them, just...
Most of the issues, if I can say this, that most of the issues that Brett and I talked about Friday afternoon late are really operational issues that won't require contract amendments. It's just the way that our dispatch center and the sheriff's office communicate back and forth to, to put that, that information out there. So about 90% of what he's told me thus far are, they're not contractual amendments. It's just operational stuff.
Would you wait till the first and next meeting, or?
So we're not having runtime issues?
Yes. We're having runtime issues, and this would, this would help if we put in the BLS units.
That's why I thought it...
Yeah, I think it would...
Where we're going with it then? Why wouldn't we go ahead then?
I'm to the, I'm to the opinion that I think that we need to, the sooner the better. I think that if, if we can increase our runtimes, for sure. I mean, like you said, if it only improves for one person that we've saved, we've done our jobs.
Can I ask a couple, just a couple more short questions? Stan, how many BLS units are y'all anticipating bringing in if...
I'm not going to put a number on it. It's going to be as, as many as it takes to get it done. We don't, we hadn't put a number on it anywhere else. And I can tell you right now, we're running 10, Monday through Friday during the day, in, to do the job in Heinz County. And we've recently started Madison. I think we've got two or three up there. So really and truly, it's whatever it takes to, to meet the demand and get those patients where they need to be.
And you have, you have them ready to go?
We can have them ready to go, yes, sir.
The BLS units and the, the basic level EMTs are much more readily available than paramedics. You know, and I say that, and of course, we can have that discussion, you know, that's a whole nother discussion. Much more available.
Now, where, where do they originate their run from when needed?
For which kind of cause?
BLS.
From wherever they're at. I mean, they could be, we try to do it in geographic circles where we keep those trucks moving, based on patient location. So they may pick up in Pilahatchee and go to the dialysis place in Brandon and pick one up at the nursing home, go to the doctor's office, take one from the hospital, back to the nursing home. It's just wherever they may be.
So they don't have a stationary location? They rove? They rove?
Oh, they'd be moving all over.
Okay, all right. Yep. And they're not an emergency? They, they cannot, uh, respond to an emergency?
Correct.
Right.
All right, so what's the consensus of the board? Do we want to go ahead and act on that?
I mean, like, there's no negative to it.
Right, so I don't think there is a negative to it. Do you guys see any negative to it, Bob or Craig?
I don't.
Okay. Do I have a motion to add this item to the agenda?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Have a motion to approve this.
I don't know how you want to word it.
Amendment to the AMR contract with Rankin County to allow for BLS unit response.
Okay. Make motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Keith. Any questions?
Yeah, and there're gonna be how much less per run?
On our charge sheet, it's about three hundred dollars less or so, but what?
What is a charge? I've never used it, so.
Uh, it's about seven, seven hundred dollars or so.
So there'll be three hundred less than that?
No, that...
That is the less.
I think over here, the, the BLS non-emergency fee's about six hundred. If I'm, I'll have to get those figures back to you. But at the end of the day, most insurance carriers regulate what they pay us anyway and it's about fifty percent of that.
Okay.
And there's no balance billing on those.
There's zero balance billing.
Okay.
Well, that was something that changed a couple of years ago, so. Did change.
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank y'all. Okay, at this time, we have John Sullivan, tax assessor.
Morning, gentlemen. Just my regular two items. Uh, petition changed the assessment on two thousand fourteen real and personal property assessment.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Item B, petition to adjust, uh, two thousand fourteen homestead exemption supplement rule.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Hey, John, when are we gonna be ready to roll out?
Roll what out?
The G I S. Are we close?
I hope so. Cause they said November.
November. That's where we are. November. I'll find out where and give you a better answer.
Thank you, man.
This is Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting authority this morning to advertise bids for the unit system for one or more wheel loaders, um, motor graders and tandem dump trucks.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dale Westbrook's road manager. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I have a discussion for the data management for the road department next to the work order system we've been looking at. Kind of an update. We found some that the price range is not a lot different than the one we presented to you to start with. I think there was one that maybe was somewhat, uh, cheaper, but none of them that we, other ones that we've looked at managed a work order system where the, the work orders where we can readily, you know, pull them back up and check them and that type stuff. City Tech, the one we presented first is the only one that so far that we found and we're talking to the people that use them, not to the salespeople. I've checked with the people that use them and so it is an update to let you know where we are.
How many, uh, how many counties have you checked or how many people roughly have you checked with that are using this kind of system?
Which one?
As far as the one that you're talking about that will be able to track the work order systems?
Harrison just put it in about ten months ago. They, it's, they say it's real user friendly and, and they like it. Lee County's had it for fifteen, twenty years, well, not that long. They've had it since like oh seven or something, or maybe before. They were one of the first to do it. Anybody in that area that I've talked to, you know, that's kind of the one that, like I said before, that, you know, the, uh, people that use them kind of recommended. Some of the other people that have them, uh, they like what they have, but evidently they don't have the volume of work orders that we do. You know, and they don't, maybe they don't have the urban type population that we have to deal with, you know, and that's where we get a lot of our work orders.
Right.
They're, they're not as worried about the work orders they are the inventory type controls that it gives them, that something like this gives them.
What was the rough estimate on, uh, the work order system? The one that you were talking about?
Looking at thirty-eight thousand. I don't have the figure.
Thirty-eight forty thousand? Is that a one time?
That was one time and then, uh, whatever the maintenance is.
Annual maintenance fee.
Five. And that thirty-eight, I, is kind of a top dollar figure, I think.
With?
Best I can plan.
The few that we've talked to, they all have the same annual maintenance on it, you know, whether it's a thousand dollars difference or something. We talked to Madison County, the one that they've had in place since oh five. They like it, it's considerably cheaper, but the one thing about it is the work orders, you can't pull it up the same way. Once it's been entered, the system we're looking at, you can pull it up by, um, name, phone number, address, whatever. The one that they're using, it's assigned a work order number and you have to have that number in order to pull it back up. So if you don't have it, you just can't search on something else. And so they're not happy with that portion of it. And that's one of the main things that we wanted was a, a different ways to be able to, to pull it back up. We're still looking, I've just even gone out there online and just looked at some, uh, that nobody's told us about and put in some, um, looked at a little video of it and all. Once you do that, you start getting the emails coming in from these people wanting to sell you the product. One I've looked at out in Denver is not really, it said work order, but it's not really geared toward road, it's more toward industry. She said they probably could make some. They don't have any counties that use it. The price is about the same as what we're looking at, so I'm not even interested in looking at something from another state that we'd be the guinea pig on how they're gonna, you know, put through.
Implement something like that.
So we can, we can check more, we just don't really know where to go from this point. A lot of smaller rural counties are still doing them by hand, you know, like we do. We just got to move on from that system.
What's, uh, what is DeSota County doing? I mean, what's?
I've tried to contact the road manager and I've not been able to get him to return my calls at this point.
But you said Madison is using a different one, but they, their drawback is that they're not able to just by, except by the numbers.
Right.
That won't work.
Yeah, that's...
Right. That, that's the one thing they don't like about it. It was a little bit cheaper. They've had it, you know, like I said, since I think oh four, oh five, and that's the one thing they don't like is the way they should pull it back up.
Right. Do you feel pretty comfortable on, uh, when you say user friendly, do you feel com- pretty comfortable then on being able to articulate this system and keep up with it?
I, yes, I...
I'm not talking about just you, I mean, your individuals and stuff like that too.
Like I said, I talked down in depth to the, uh, the secretary to the road manager in Harrison County.
Right.
And that's where all the road managers send you to their secretaries if you want to know all the nuts and bolts about something. And she, uh, the lady I talked to, I asked her a particular thing about pulling up something and then she evidently, they have a, she called a call center.
Right.
I guess, you know, for the county, they have, probably would be something custom, you know, just ladies that take calls. They do several different things since they have the beaches and whatnot that they deal. I think they've got them under this system. But I asked her, I said, can you pull up a work order by phone number? She said, I don't know, I haven't ever had to do that. She deals with some other part of the lady I was talking to. And she said, hold on a minute. So she, I heard her punching in one, you mean? She said, yeah, you can do that. So, you know, and I can't guarantee, you know, that it's that simple. But I went back and reviewed a disk that they sent us and, and it looks, you know, something that we ought to be able to handle without a lot of. And, uh, they say the training on it, you know, they'll do whatever they have to to, to get you up to speed, what the lady in Harrison County said.
So you run through a trial version?
Uh, yes, they had a little disk and, you know, I don't know, that showed, you know, did the, uh, showed you how to go through the thing and it was, it was a little different than the one Laura and I looked at where the guy was trying to explain it to us and he was running the mouse all over the place in a little error and I couldn't keep up with that.
Could Laura?
No, it's hard too when you're looking on a screen and they're saying punches and that and the little mouse is going in all directions. I'd rather do it hands on myself to learn how to do it.
So you, you felt pretty comfortable with that one too? You think that one's more user friendly too?
Well, you know, any, any of them, you've got to have the training period for it. But I don't see any problem with it, that, you know, it, it can't be learned as any other program that we might have.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, Mr. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer.
Thank you, sir.
You don't want to say anything before you get started to your attorney?
I won't start nothing.
I'm sorry for your loss.
Come on.
So glad your attorney's over here loaded for bear.
No, he's wimping out. Cause he heard my threat, so.
Oh, he heard your threat, okay.
May have had something to do with it.
I understand.
I was ready to put him down.
You have got your backup back there.
Why don't you move on, Buster?
Yeah, I believe, I believe we...
Unscathed.
Unscathed. I believe that's a good idea. First item I have on the agenda is our Old Fanning Road project and I'm recommending approval of pay request number twenty-three to Southern Rock LLC in the amount of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-two cents and authority to issue that check.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions?
Yeah, we heard from M D O T concerning our meeting we had over there and getting our contractor paid.
Have not. Not sure.
What do you suggest our best path forward is?
Well, as long as we're dealing with M D O T, we kind of have to wait on, on them to give us some feedback. Like it or not, they're active in the project, M D O T being active in the project and they will give us a, a decision, I think, very shortly, but we do not have it at this time. So I think, that's your question, Mr. Bishop, the only thing we can do is just go on along and, and hope for a resolution. I know the contractor would certainly love a resolution because, uh...
It's almost finished.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, the project, anybody who's seen it recently, it's, it's coming along.
Why is it lacking?
Uh, you know, we had turned more traffic aloof on it. Of course, now keep in mind, if you hear any feedback in the future, as we, as we go to finish that job up, some of those barrels are gonna be moved again. And where you got, let's say, two lanes heading north, you may just have one lane heading north for a while. And the same thing on the south side because of the additional work that has to be done and the final striping has to go down. There's still some, some things that have to be done, but, uh, we are approaching the end of that project.
Okay, I understand that there was a, um, an email, I guess, continual in Laurelwood about, uh, flooding issues, is that correct? Was that through the creek or was it?
Yeah. I, I've sent a reply on that, Greg. Uh, you may not have had a chance to look at it yet.
Yeah.
But the, uh, the long and short of it is that that's a, it's a private matter that involves private property, um, and private property owners. And I think there's some misunderstanding on the part of some of the homeowners about the county having some sort of responsibility on that and there's just not any there. And so my intention is to communicate with the homeowners today.
Okay.
To let them know that whatever recourse they have, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to make that or effect that privately with the individuals who are causing the issues.
I might make a suggestion to you, the, uh, alderman over there, you might want to include her too.
Absolutely. I noticed that she was copied on the email, so I'll make certain that she's aware before I send anything out. In fact, I'll probably just call her directly.
What is the issue now from where you put the dirt over there by Laurelwood?
Right. Just wanted to understand. Yeah, because it's such a, I guess, such a, an incline, incline, whatever, that, uh, did not ditch back out. I guess there used to be a ditch and it filled in the ditch from runoff, so allowed...
Who put the dirt there?
You can see a good bit of sedimentation.
That would have been the contractor.
Or Old Fanning?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it's clearly leaving the site. The, the sediment is. And so that's an issue. It clearly is an issue. Uh, and it's probably gonna need to be dealt with. The problem is that that's not a county matter. Everything that we're talking about is private property.
That's correct.
Understand that this piece of property, Jay, that we're talking about, where, where there, there has been work done, that, that is a private agreement between the road contractor and the private land owner. It's not a part of the project. It's beyond the scope of the project. The county can't control that transaction.
He just worked something out with the private land owner or they together to do this.
It's awfully convenient. It's right there next to the property.
Yeah, it's against the project. But he could have hauled that dirt to mountain creek if he wanted to.
Right.
That was his bid.
We, we don't control where the contractor, uh, prepares or lays down his fill material. He chose that spot. That spot is now apparently allegedly creating some issues for some of the property owners. That is a private matter.
So the owner of the, who, the owner of the, the lot basically is who you need to address, they need to address.
And he may have some recourse back against the user, but this is a, this is a matter that involves two different owners, private owners of private property.
Okay.
And it just so happens we have a very similar situation on the other end of the road.
That's correct.
Really? Oh, gosh, okay.
And I will say that we, uh, we saw, at least we were told, I don't know if any activities happened, but, uh, we understand that there's gonna be a resolution for that matter that was worked out. So it, it can be worked out and that would be my hope.
But we thought it was anyway till Friday.
You gonna get that call?
Our hope is not lost yet.
Yeah, I'm gonna count on our attorney to pull this through. I got faith in him.
Okay.
All righty, so that was the questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Second item I have on the agenda is our Highway forty-nine drainage improvements. I'm recommending approval of pay request number four to Thornton Construction Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three, two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. And authority to issue that check.
So move.
Check.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the third, uh, item that I have on the agenda pertains to a discussion about the Andrew Jackson Circle where Air Gas is located. And, uh, at this time, I'm going to get, uh, Tim to come up here. We have a drawing of what we're talking about. There have been, I think, uh, six accidents with the train trucks at this location. I think one of them, at least, had fatalities in it. And, uh, Air Gas has been very cooperative in trying to get something worked out, as, as the railroad. And we have representatives back in the back of the room from both of those, uh, entities. So, Tim, why don't you basically explain that drawing?
Where we are, US Highway forty-nine, Dixie Road takes off of forty-nine. Uh, this is Andrew Jackson Circle in red here, and it ties in twice, it just makes a loop along Dixie Road. The, uh, magenta line here, that's the railroad tracks. And basically, where we started was right here at this intersection. A lot of concern here, as you can see, you've got multiple tracks coming in there. You've got one coming in from, uh, I think it's Pursue Energy?
Pursue Energy.
Uh, across the, uh, across the highway. Then you've got the mainline track, and then you've got the, uh, Air Gas facility track there too. And, uh, one of the main issues is you see the angle that Andrew Jackson Circle comes in. Well, there's no red light out at, uh, Dixie Road and forty-nine. It's a bad intersection. It's out there where the little, uh, Quick Stop is, uh, used to be West Quick Stop. Uh, but it's, it's a bad intersection, and it actually comes in at a skew too with forty-nine. So all the Air Gas transport trucks come out of here and take a right, and come south, and go, and come out Laughlin Road at the Star Brandon Road intersection where there's a red light. That's, that's really the only way you're making with, uh, tractor trailer out of that. So basically, we started concentrating here and seeing if there was just anything we could do at the immediate intersection to, uh, to make improvements. And unfortunately, because there's three or four tracks there, you just, you can't do anything right here. We looked at trying to widen out the intersection, make some turning radiuses bigger. There's just not a lot of improvements you can make, because you have all those tracks converge. So back after we started looking here, uh, and realigning to Andrew Jackson. And basically, under this proposal, what would happen is Andrew Jackson Circle from here, it would be closed through here. And, uh, Air Gas would have an entrance here, and, uh, and then Andrew Jackson Circle would tie into Dixie right here at a ninety. We could put in, we could put in some small turn lanes where the tractor trailers would have, uh, a little bit more, uh, room there to, uh, to maneuver and get onto Dixie Road. Also, right there, uh, working with M.D.O.T. and C.N., uh, there would be a gated crossing there, uh, which, which is the main scenario that keeps the trucks. I mean, you can't, you can't make it a hundred percent, uh, foolproof, but with the gates, tractor trailers aren't going to go around the gates. Uh, so that intersection would ultimately become a signalized intersection. Now, the, the other part of this down here, you see some, uh, improved, potential improvements down here is, uh, as we talked about, Andrew Jackson Circle makes a loop. Well, when there's an issue here, uh, on the tracks, and it's happened several times, none of these folks that live out of here have any access to their, uh, to their house. They're, they're totally blocked off. So, uh, what, uh, this crossing here, I think probably was an old logging crossing at one time. It's a terrible elevation. Uh, an eighteen wheeler couldn't even think about making this crossing, nor could a truck pulling a trailer or something. It's just really, really high. So what we've talked about with M.D.O.T. and C.N. is potentially closing this, uh, this crossing here. And they love it when you close a bad cross. And that, that's just the public safety there, uh, to get big stars over that. And then try to bring Andrew Jackson Circle out here to Laughlin Road, where this, this rail crossing now just has the cross on it. It doesn't have no lights, no gates. If we brought, uh, Andrew Jackson Circle out here, basically what we would do here then is have another gated crossing here, signalized. Uh, so you're, not only are you improving the safety for the Andrew Jackson Circle folks, but the Laughlin Road folks now, uh, you know, they don't have any lights. They just, uh, it's all based on vision. So, uh, it's kind of, kind of a two-fold deal, but, uh, it's, it's, you know, at both ends of Andrew Jackson Circle. So that's kind of where we are. I don't know if the railroad or C.N. folks, I mean, the, the Air Gas folks have anything to add to that.
I will say, and I'll mention to some of you, this last incident happened to be on, I think, on a Wednesday night, and there were actually people parking in the road on Dixie crawling under the train, walking to get to their homes. And this, we're talking about, uh, there was also one in there, you know, that she stayed home because she was eight months pregnant, her husband went to church, you know, so all these different stories coming ahead. Also, in a situation like this, there's not even a way to get to Air Gas if there was an emergency that happened there. If, if you had unfortunate accident like, but this is a solution that will solve, um, you know, if this would ever happen again, you'd have access in. You may have to go around by Florence, or you go down to the other crossing and to further down Star. But you would have a way in to these for emergency, uh, use or, or just normal use, but, uh.
Why the extra road there? I mean, why not just have truck, truck traffic not use that road?
An extra road?
What are you talking about?
The one down on the bottom right.
Where? No, the bottom right.
Yeah.
If you have an incident here, and you're still potentially going to have an incident here, the train backs up all the way.
Yeah, this, not, not talking about long distance, Jay. We're not talking about miles here.
You're making it so that there is access to the folks back here from Laughlin.
See, people live on Andrew Jackson Circle.
Oh, believe me, I know, I could see it all the time in Pearl, you know, that the railroad constantly blocks the highway.
And this crossing is terribly unsafe here too. Just mainly because of the elevation change, and it comes in at an angle too. So you eliminate, here you got a ninety degree crossing, a good concern at Grammys, flat right here, uh.
The, the, uh, when we've met with, um, Air Gas and the representative of Air Gas and Railroad, M.D.O.T., everybody's been real, uh, accommodating, and, and I will say, willing to work out something to, to solve this problem, a solution. They've, um, you know, I, I have to commend in the way that everybody's come together to, to recognize this is something we got to go, it's got to be corrected now, and, uh, we don't want to see this, uh, problem anymore. You get more and more trucks coming in, you get more and more traffic, just because the areas, the United County's growing. But, uh, that's created part of the problem, I'm sure.
And kind of where we are now, a- after the initial meeting, Engineering Services was contracted by Air Gas to survey this area right here. So we've, we've done the survey work here just to see what the possibilities were as far as laying it out, to see how we can make this happen. Then this came along too, as part of it, and, and it, it all goes hand in hand, because we're talking about closing crossings and crossing here, and crossing here. So with M.D.O.T. and, and C.N. and, and Air Gas and the county all involved, we feel like it all needs to happen together.
Would you, would you like to say something, Jeff?
Yeah. After this past incident, you know, one of our drivers, you know, he made, obviously he made some mistakes.
This, this is, uh, Joe Miller with Representative of Air Gas.
Speaking of things.
You know, our driver, uh, made some errors when he was approaching. He, he, he ran the stop sign going across the mainline tracks, and we caught that on video by the railroad. Uh, he was injured first. Fortunately, it wasn't life threatening, but he spent a couple of days in the hospital. And after that incident happened, um, my boss, who's the president of Air Gas, Dry Acid Carbonic, you know, we were charged with, look, this happened five other times before. We got to make sure that this doesn't happen again. The incident I had prior was, uh, was a contract carrier, and he was actually, he was actually killed in that incident. But there were four other incidents before. And then in looking at, at the layout of this, it's just extremely difficult for tractor trailers to exit, um, our facility and, and to get onto Dixie Highway. If they turn left, then they would have to go and try to, you know, get up to speed crossing, uh, forty-nine, where there isn't controlled intersection. So we're forced to take a right turn to get out. The way that the stop signs, there's a stop sign at the, at the main line, and then now there's a yield sign. Uh, our drivers have mentioned that, um, some cross traffic on Dixie Highway doesn't stop. And if there's a, the distance from the main line onto Dixie Road is such that if they have to stop, the tail end of our trailer is still on the mainline track. And prior to this previous incident, there was actually a stop sign at the main line and a stop sign on Dixie Highway. So far, drivers actually obeyed the stop signs. Again, the tail end of their trailer would be on the mainline of the track. Since that time, a yield sign has been put up. So, you know, they, they talked before about, you know, can we just make some adjustments to the addition, to the way that the road is set up right now? And, you know, if you, if you look at the, at the angle, the way that the, uh, our tractors pull up, it's difficult for them to see all the way down the main line. So in the meantime, what we've done is, is we've brought on a, uh, private security company to act as crossing guards to make sure, and they actually walk up to the line, and our vehicles both coming in, entering and exiting, um, have to stop, and they have to wait for the, the crossing guard basically, uh, to let them, uh, know that it's clear. Because we just, like I said before, we can't, we don't want to have another incident like this. God forbid, you know, one person lost their life, and we don't want it to happen again. So after this, uh, past incident, you know, we were able to get every, the group together and, um, and working out. And we were asked to, um, as, uh, to support the project by conducting, paying for the engineering study. And, and this is what we came up with, and, uh, hope that the, uh, county will support us and make it safe for everybody.
Didn't we realign this already one time? We've done some work out there before.
I don't know of anything.
Changed the, uh, the sign, what you, uh, the sign changed from the start.
There's really nothing.
I know we've, it seemed like we've talked about it, but I don't think we've done anything, Jay.
I think it's because there's other accidents, there's been talk about it.
Yeah, we've.
Yeah. There's nothing, never could come together with everybody.
I, I went to, I went to, I went to Jared Kinsley and talked.
No, come on.
My name is John Dining, I'm with the Illinois Central Railroad, C.N. There had been discussion since two thousand, either two thousand, two thousand and one about realigning. But the physical alignment of that road has not been changed since I've been manager of Public Works. The changes recently were with the traffic control devices, the stop to the, stop to yield. That, that's about the only thing that has changed out there since two thousand.
Does this, uh, realignment, I know y'all have worked real close together, does that look like the best scenario for all involved? As far as safety and making sure that everything's going to go exactly what we need?
Yeah, from our, from our standpoint, it, it unsolves a couple of issues. Because one of the issues that we have in the current crossing, in order for our trucks to make that right-hand turn, after, as soon as they cross the mainline tracks, they got to, they got to veer to the left in order to make that, that corner on, on the, um, on the Dixie.
Right.
With this and, uh, like the run-up lane, and if the stop signs are set far enough back, we're not going to have that issue where our trucks are going to be actually going into oncoming traffic.
Dixie's not real wide, Craig.
And then with the, with the crossing, with the crossing arms.
Right. How?
The probability of a, of a truck.
It still looks like that Dixie is real close to the, the track. I mean, it just, it just.
It is.
It is.
There, there is no.
Right there.
So with, with one truck trying to get to that, are they not still back over the, over the tracks themselves, or?
If the new line right here.
Right.
Thought process would be with, with the gates. The gates would stop him on this side of the track. Then once the gates open and he's gone, he would have a, and it's not shown here, but he would have a little running lane where he could get out on Dixie and actually be headed south on Dixie, and not be in the main Dixie traffic line. We just put it basically in acceleration lane there.
Okay.
He can make a right turn right here and gets headed south. He may not can get actually onto Dixie, he may be in the little acceleration lane.
Okay, well, that's where.
He can get away from it, he can clear the track.
I got you.
Even if traffic is not.
That's what I was missing, I guess. I didn't see the acceleration lane or anything like that. I'm just thinking he's going right on Dixie, and he's still going to have to come to a stop sign and still be partially in and out.
No, part of the problem, though, if you go on up with the other one, you can't really see it, Greg. There's, uh, um, several tracks there.
Right, yeah.
When you go down to the other one, there's only.
Yeah, it looks like about four.
Right.
Right. This one looks like one or two.
And you had, and you had a different angle, see?
Right. Straight on.
Right.
This is just one track.
Just one track?
Yeah.
And I understand the.
Two tracks.
Two.
And I understand the far right one, whenever you were telling me earlier, it's got like a fifteen foot elevation or so. I know, you know, down south, I've dealt with those out in the rural county, and it's, it is, if you don't get going, you're, you better get going, because those, uh, trains will come through there pretty quick, and we've had a lot of fatalities down there, so.
On the proposed new road design, uh, on the end nearest the plant, if he takes a left on Dixie Road, can he get to forty-nine from there?
Yeah, but.
Right here?
Yeah.
He can. If that's going out at, at, at this uncontrolled intersection out there, it's actually in a curve in Highway forty-nine, and it, it's, there's been a lot of wrecks out there, not tractor trailer wrecks, it's just.
You got to cross.
It's a safe intersection as it is.
Well, you said M.D.O.T. was participating in the project. Their participation won't do anything to correct that intersection.
We, we approached them about that.
They made that very clear.
Possibly be signalized. And he said, oh, yeah, we can look at it, but you may be talking about twenty years. And he, he.
Yeah.
Put it way off.
It was, uh, not in the equation at all.
It's part of the deal, the reason why we're going to get signalization, that we're going to close one. It's part of the deal, uh, by us getting signalization, we close the other.
Close that one right there, the closing, crossing closer.
If we address that situation there at the plant, there's really no need for the other road. Because we won't be having accidents at that time. We'll have a gate, and it'll all be controlled.
The, I don't want to really speak for M.D.O.T. officially, but what they indicated at the meeting was the funding for lights and gates out of Laughlin would be tied to the closing.
I figured that. Yeah. The, the truth is coming out now.
What?
That they're going to give up some, basically.
In order for them to put up signalization there that we had to go along with closing that other road, which is going to make us build another road.
Right.
Not talking about very, very long, but you couldn't, I mean, it's not a real long road.
You said a thousand feet?
Hmm?
Was it a thousand feet?
About that.
You know, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I really am. Just in a generic broad terms, that little stretch right there, the, on the bottom right, what kind of figures you looking at to put in the road, something like that? Just ballpark. To county specs.
Without the benefit of calculator, I'm going to say three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And we're going to pick up all that tab?
Well, we, we're, I don't think we're to that stage yet.
We haven't, we haven't paid for it yet.
Those discussions haven't been had yet, is until we get the whole plan of exactly what's going to happen and get M.D.O.T. involved in what they're going to participate in this closure, then.
Maybe you can pick up some of.
Air Gas has been very, uh, been willing to work with us very, very well. I, I keep going back to that, they've, they've, um, really shown a sincere interest in resolving this for the community, as well as for them.
Okay.
Were there any financial liabilities here for us, or if we, if we don't act, as opposed to?
Those are not for the county. I think, uh, the financial issues obviously relate both to the railroad and to, uh, to Air Gas, obviously. But there is some exposure when we have that many accidents at a.
Right.
At a controlled crossing like that, it starts getting really ticklish, to be quite honest. We, we've had enough, uh, bad issues out here, and we've had some near misses, I think I can say that. And because of that, our awareness of it as a difficult intersection bears some attention.
Well, and I did, there were a lot of phone calls after, so just, you know, like, you, something's got to be done. You know, I mean, that, and so that's when we really initiated the, uh, start back months ago. Everybody came together, met, and just had a open table discussion. And then we met back, what was it, three weeks ago? And, uh, after they had basically immediately, uh, contracted with Engineered Services to start looking at this. And, um, then we met back three weeks ago, and that's when it was time to come here to the board, to let the board see everything then.
It's pretty obvious we've got, uh, fairly significant vehicles leaving a facility, uh, with their contents under pressure. The nice if we can get them safely to and from. So that's one of the big issues here.
I was just wondering, who own the land next to Air Gas? Is it Air Gas, or to the right, to your right, Craig?
Air, Air Gas owns quite a bit of this. This road would actually clip a couple of properties right in here at very, the, the properties run, uh, north and south. Uh, it would clip the ends of those properties, but Air Gas owns the majority of the property. They, they own a good bit in this wooded area over here. They don't own a dollar, but they, they own a good portion.
What about on the thousand foot part?
I, I think there's two or three property owners here, uh, and obviously with the railroad, uh, it'd be on the east edge of their property.
Yeah. It's actually right on, on edge of the railroad property too.
How much of the railroad property do you guys have on the side of your railroad tracks?
Not enough.
Not enough to? But some of it.
We looked at it, yeah.
We, we looked at it, there's some room to put the, the county ditch and.
Right.
Some, some of the non-pavement parts of the road.
Right.
So that it could be abutted, but there's not enough ru- room from the track to the.
Right.
To make a, to make a county road.
Looked at that first.
Right.
Looked at that first.
Okay.
How much of the engineering's been done already? What, what else been done?
Just preliminary work with Air Gas, like, what we, we're asking today. If you want to move on this, is authorize us to go ahead. We would have to do a design, prepare some plans. Then we come with what I call a pretty hard estimate of what the cost will be, and we'll break the cost up from the west end and the east end, we'll have that, that broken down. And then that's when you would enter into discussions with all the parties as to who would pay what.
Could you not get a cost estimate without doing the design?
If, uh, I'm wondering, we wouldn't be a month a week, then we could certainly come with an estimate, uh.
I think some of what we've got to do is have enough of the design to get to M.D.O.T. so we can get their input on.
We have to have that.
Signalization at these crosses, since that's such an important part of the project. I, I think we're going to be limited, Jay, and, and, uh, or we're going to be under, subject to their direction as it relates to what. as it relates to what sort of, uh, plan is going to have to be put in front of them. I'd hate for us to get a number that then we find out after we send everything to MDOT, we didn't send them everything they needed or want.
Then we start again.
Well, another thing, this, uh, Laughlin Road.
We'll be on the hook on ourselves.
You're actually, I don't know if you caught that, but you're solving two problems with one if you do this because of that open track there also.
Right here.
Right.
Who's going to pick up the other tab?
Because you have signalization there also.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that, that, I guess I'm going to emphasize again, that, that's not as signalized. It has the.
Crossbars.
Cross, cross, but only that's it. No, no lights, no, no gates, no, we do it here, so.
Just the cross.
It, it has crossbars. It has passive signage.
Okay.
There are no active lights or gates on it.
There's nothing. Yeah, it's just an open track. I call it, really, I mean, crossing.
So are we going to get participation out of the railroad and Airgas on design or construction of the road?
We, that depends.
On what?
On what?
On what, exactly.
That's what I'm going to do.
I mean, I, I don't, I just, I think if we go in vote on this today, we're principal committing ourselves to the project, so. But I, I feel like we're, we could probably do some things to address some safety without doing all of what's being presented here too.
I think this is your best shot to correct the problems. It's going to be an ongoing problem. And you also got participation, willing, willing participation from, uh, other areas. And the, the problem's not going to go away. You can either correct it now or correct it later. And I think the fact that we got participation now from others, you probably won't, uh, be that fortunate at another, uh, opportunity, another time.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah, but they didn't say they were going to participate.
They, they have, um.
We've already.
They've already committed.
Already participated.
They've already committed to participating. And they already are participating.
I think he's just trying to be more definitive in their participation.
Yeah, well, and I, I would, um, you know, and then there again, I've, I've made this statement before. We wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be even in this situation if it was not for the Airgas plant. And I don't mean that any, we're glad you're there, but I'm just saying, this has helped create some of the problems. I mean, that's, I mean, we, we, you've acknowledged that. We've all agreed to that.
All right. Any more questions? It's a pleasure to talk.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I, I said, I talked to y'all earlier, let you kind of see what's going on. That was good. Tim had that.
Okay, so we're, um, the next step that they're asking for is for us to find, to get to the next level?
Basically to authorize county consulting engineer to perform survey work and prepare cost estimates.
Most approved.
Head of motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming from the long distance that you did this morning. I understand you had a little issue. Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Uh. How come Buster always costs us money?
Oh, man.
You just now finding that out?
Well, I just got here.
Well, just let me tell you, everybody comes to that podium, costs us money, not just him.
There you go. Come in there. There you go.
Stick around.
Yeah. I would request to add one item to the agenda.
Let's fix it. See, I don't see anything else on here.
Well, that's right. Well, well, actually, I, I didn't get a whole lot of clarification on this till Friday. Uh, later in the day Friday, as a matter of fact. Uh, but it pertains to state aid funds. Uh, some additional state aid funds. So I would request that this item be added to the agenda for discussion.
I made the motion to add, like, your item.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Keith.
State aid funds.
Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, uh, recently, fairly recently, uh, the legislature had provided, uh, some additional funds for off-state aid construction, maybe, I don't know what the MDOT do, doesn't bother me, but for, for state aid. And, uh, we now having the fund, uh, the available monies for state aid work is a million four forty-six, eight fifty oh one. And the question that I had, as you know, we've got our, our ongoing state aid overlay project, not the LSRP, that's a different one. The state aid monies and our contractor is winding down and state aid had talked to me about the possibility of adding this to that contract to utilize these funds, you know? Of course, that is a maintenance contract, as you know, which means it has to be spent not only on a, on a road on the state aid route, but on a road where state aid monies have already been spent, which. Do I?
Say, I got one in mind for you.
But, uh, I had, uh, I had talked to Dale a little bit about, see what his opinion was of some state aid roads. If you decide to go this route, because, you know, we'd have to get with him. I've just casually mentioned to the contract, because he could say, no, no, I won't finish up the idea. Uh, but he, he has shown some interest in it, but, uh, well, you know, we would have to have a change order to this contract and so forth, which is just common. I don't have to do. But I guess the information that I'm needing now, because if we're going to do this, I need to go ahead and put that process in motion.
How much money are we talking about?
You've got a million four hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and one cent.
Million and a half. Buster, three years ago, when we voted on our four-year plan, did we bid it all out? One contractor got all of it?
You mean the state aid monies?
Right.
Yes, sir. It was, it was one project, uh, an overlay project, overlay maintenance, which is a maintenance project. That's, that's what it was bid at that time. That was it. And I guess what I'm asking, Dave, do you want to add this to it or?
Why wouldn't we?
Well, let me ask.
I don't know. It's your best buying, best buying for your.
Let me ask you a question here too.
Why you want to add it to it?
Did, did we not have to add money into our state aid to, uh, finish out some state aid roads too?
Probably, probably what you're thinking about is the county on, I'm going to switch on you a little bit.
Right.
The LSBP funds.
Okay.
And since our bridges on the local roads were in good shape, they allowed us to use that, uh, for overlay work. And that's that old forty-nine and the old Highway forty-three project, which we've got bid now.
Say hallelujah.
Well, what, what the county has done, I think maybe where you're going, you had to go on record with state aid that if you had an overrun on the project over the LSB funds that were available.
Right.
The county would pick that difference up.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Totally different pot. Yeah, but it just seems like we had to add extra monies in too for the.
It was for those that.
It was? Okay.
Do we have to match this?
This is a no-match?
No, this is just state aid fund.
Yeah, so why wouldn't we do this? I mean.
Yeah, well, my only question, if you wanted to just try to extend that contract and go on and cover up some more roads that needed.
I mean, isn't that what, only, only way we could use it?
It would have to be something like that, yes, sir. Well, no, let me back up. Your existing contract is a maintenance contract, an overlay contract. If you said, oh, no, we're not going to do that, it would, it would not fall under that criteria. No, it was, you wouldn't be forced to do that. Now, an alternative, you could come with another contract, another overlay maintenance contract if you didn't want to extend this one, which I wouldn't recommend.
What I'm saying is it has to be an overlay maintenance project.
It's got to be a state aid road.
Right, I know, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, for state aid.
It does not have to be a maintenance, answer that.
And I just didn't know, but I mean, either way, it was like it's something we need to, uh, I don't want to let any money slip by that we could put to use, but I don't know what else. But I know what, whether, you're talking about extending it or not. If you're going to extend it, then you would be, uh, extending for a maintenance contract.
Yes, sir.
And that's fine too. But I mean, if we had something else that if we go further, if it wasn't a maintenance contract, that'd be good too. So either way, I don't know why we would turn it down.
Yeah, I think we need to accept it, but I'd like to see a list of what potential.
Roads?
Right. That this could go towards.
Hold on. I have discussed this just a little bit with the road manager.
I'm sure you have.
Well, what the deal was is I, I had, uh, inkling's not a good term, but I just had a vision that this might be coming down the pipe.
Really?
And we just got notification in our fund, but I had, I had sent a little bird to, to Dale. Say, Dale, come on up here. You're just sitting back there nodding. Come on, man.
A million divided by five? What are you looking at? A million divided by five or highway?
May not have.
Oh, not, not under unit system.
No, sir.
No, sir, no, sir.
I don't know.
Feet system, yes, sir. Unit system, no, sir.
I'm just going to see where this is headed.
No, I, I just told Dale to, to look at the state aid roads in the county.
Right.
Where state aid monies had been spent. And that would allow us to, if the contractor agrees, to kick it over into his contract.
Got you.
And I looked at some, I had two, uh, at the time you first told me, we, the money, you know, was a little bit smaller. And then he came back with some more and, uh, I haven't had time to come up with enough to, you know, was probably nailing down exactly which roads.
Is he teaching you real well?
Well, just go in District Five when you look at them too.
We'll see.
We do have some state aid roads in District Five too.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
But then you're looking at beats again, you know? You gotta get away from that to you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we don't, we don't want to talk beats.
No, we need need.
We don't want to go to jail.
We're looking at need.
Well, by us, uh, voting to do this today, do we have to sign a road to go with it today?
You pretty much need to go ahead and authorize it because we will have to start getting into some real discussions with the contractor.
I'm asking, if we authorize to do it, do we have to have the roads today?
In my opinion, as long as you agree with your road manager.
Well, I'd like to see a list of the roads. Oh, that's a.
Well, and he just said he hadn't had a chance to see.
I know, but.
No, he said he hadn't had a chance to find enough.
What Jay's asking is a total different question now. For us to authorize that, wouldn't we need to see the?
I'm just asking, do we have to do the roads in conjunction with authorization? Do we have to know what roads we're going to do today?
Well, because we have to look at the roads with the contractor before we can initiate paperwork with them, whether that's done today or next week or whatever. I'm just concerned if you delay it much longer, our contractor.
I'm not wanting to delay it. I'm just.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, but if, if, what I'm saying, if you say, well, let's put it off next week or whatever, take it easy and find out the road. We delay it much longer. Our contractor is, is going to be hesitant to continue it on. And I'll tell you why. And I don't, I don't blame him. One, they're on the state aid system. They won't release any of his rent, retainage of what he has done so far.
I don't think you understood my question.
Yes, sir. That's asking, yeah, I know.
I'm ready to vote on it. Let's get it done. Then y'all can pick out whatever roads we need afterwards.
I do have a motion to approve this, uh, item to be added to the, item to the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
I think we already had it.
Oh, we did? Good.
I got a motion to, I made a motion to approve this and the funds, state aid funds. And you all then will look at where the funds will be, uh.
Discussed.
You'll certainly, you'll certainly be notified.
Sure.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second District Five.
Got a second by Mr. Bishop with, uh, I don't know what the word would be. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Craig Slay, Board Attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item under B is to set a public hearing for December the fifteenth of 2014 at 9:00 AM for the Rankin County Stormwater Management Program.
Most to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Item B is to open a public hearing on the Herbali Puckett rezoning request at 1961 Florence Byham Road, District One property. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Puckett is requesting to rezone 2.1 acres on the corner of Friendship Road and Florence Byham Road from C3 to RE1A. This is a, this is Lot One of Friendship Acres subdivision. The property's never been used as commercial. A conditional use request by the previous property owner to place a manufactured home on the property was granted in 2009. Mr. Puckett brought, bought the property and the existing manufactured home in 2011. He wants to replace the existing single wide with a 2015 28 by 52 manufactured home and is requesting that the zoning be changed to reflect the residential use and to match the zoning of the other lots in Friendship Acres subdivision. So I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Herbali Puckett Junior rezon request? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone coming forward in opposition. We'll close that public hearing and be appropriate to take action.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
I believe you'll need to, I believe they want to get with Renee, you all, pretty quick. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Mr. President, item C is for the Board to take action to authorize the amendment of the Rankin County Local Non-Hazardous Solid Waste Management Plan in conformity with the application of Denali Water Solutions LLC. You'll recall that at the last board meeting, we had a public hearing. Uh, the, there were no comments, no, no voices in opposition. There's been no written submitted opposition to the amendment to the solid waste plan. Uh, your attorney who's handling this, Mr. Palmer's here if there are any questions. Um, I don't want him to come up to the podium because, as Jake pointed out, that would cost y'all some additional money for him to actually come up here. So I'm going to let him stay back there.
Thanks.
But, uh, uh, at this time, uh, instead of us taking action immediately at the stage of the public hearing, we put it off for a board meeting in order for us to basically, uh, avoid a situation where we had to explain, uh, to DEQ why we took action immediately on the same day as our, as our hearing. So this is just a step in the process. We are now going to take action to, to approve and to authorize the amendment of the solid waste plan. So it'd be appropriate for a motion on that.
Most approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Keith. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
I believe that Mr. Palmer provided a formal resolution at the end of last week, so there will be something to execute on that item when we conclude today. Item D is a discussion of and potential, potential action to authorize the use of Moncur Road Bridge for filming of scenes for a television movie called Life at These Speeds. This request has been made by a company called Life at These Speeds LLC, a California business corporation pursuant to an appropriate location agreement. Copy is attached to your documents here. And contingent upon, uh, the agreement to reimburse Rankin County for any costs associated with county personnel or equipment required to coordinate public safety or emergency operations at the location. Uh, you guys have been plugged in in this process as we've gone through. We've met with the location company, the representative. Uh, the location representative on Friday was able to confirm with Heinz County that Heinz County is cooperating uh, and has agreed to the bridge closure. Uh, the film company has secured appropriate signage to notify residents who are using that area that the bridge will be closed at the times it's going to be closed and the dates it's going to be closed. There's two different closures, uh, one today, uh, and another on Saturday. Uh, the one today, um, uh, started at eight o'clock this morning. Um, we, uh, communicated with you guys so that we were clear about what the company was intending to do uh, and the feeling of, uh, of those who were contacted, which is all of you, was that we should go ahead and proceed to give that authorization in light of the timeliness of the request. So we are clear, clearing it up now, uh, at the board meeting. What I would need is a motion to approve this location agreement and to authorize the execution of the, of the location agreement on the terms that were presented.
And all of our liabilities are covered.
Yes, sir. They have also provided, in addition to the location agreement, a certificate of liability insurance. Uh, I believe it's a million dollars. I've got a copy over here. They, they've got, uh, just a standard court. a standard court liability, it's a million dollar general liability coverage. Yes, sir. So they will take responsibility, they have their own safety personnel, they've also, they are also utilizing both Rankin and Hines County law enforcement for the purpose of traffic control, and my understanding is that when they get ready to shoot some of the scenes that they're intending to shoot, that, that we will have representatives from our EOC on site, because my, my understanding is they intend to have an actor in the water at some point, so we'll have some additional safety there, but they've got their own safety guards.
And everything be reimbursed, reimbursed if seen expensed.
Gotcha. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. I guess that Janice wasn't the bus driver.
She's not the bus driver.
No, but they actually were there, I asked.
She is qualified.
Yeah.
I sent a message this morning, wondered if, to see if they were actually there, and because of the weather, they said, yeah, they're here now.
Yeah.
And they're gonna get in that morning?
I don't know if they're in Florida.
He does, sir.
They're out on site.
You got something else, don't you?
Yes, sir. Item E is, is a matter involving the retention of Government Consultants, Inc. as financial consultant and advisor to Rankin County for the purpose of tax exempt tax increment limited obligation bonds for the outlets of Bloomfield Project and for related purposes and authority to execute those disclosure documents. I saw Mr. Norris here, if there are any questions on that, just by way of explanation, the Bloomfield Project is something that has been around for many years, this portion of the project relates to the outlets of Mississippi. The initial development agreement, and I'm gonna let these folks correct me if I'm wrong on my dates, but I believe the initial development agreement was executed in 2011, and that development agreement required the developer of Bloomfields to install what is considered public infrastructure improvements, things like roads, gutters, sewage, stormwater, stormwater retention, those kinds of facilities. That has been done as a part of the development agreement, they have now provided a capitulation of the amount of those infrastructure improvements, that has been certified. Your tax assessor has done an excellent job of determining what the likely ad valorem impact of the development is and how that relates to ad valorem revenue for the county, and on the basis of that determination, an amount of a bond issuance has been presented at 4.65 million dollars. You would be, and I'm getting over into the other parts of this beyond just government consultants, but we need, obviously we need financial consultants to help us through that process, you're also gonna need bond counsel, and we have very capable bond counsel as you'll see in the next item. So there's a, there's a 30,000-foot view of what we're doing, there will be a bond issue of 4.65 million dollars that will be funded through the ad valorem revenue generated off of the project. Okay? So the first item is to authorize government consultants as our financial consultant, our financial consultant for that project.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Now, I've gone through all of that, so item F would be easy, authority of the Board present to execute the engagement letter with Butler Snow as bond counsel for tax exempt tax increment limited obligation bonds, this is the outlet of Bloomfield Project, I believe Mr. Boujouas handy in the event where needed.
I know what it takes to get him here now. Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Item G is gonna take a little while to get all the way through. This is the resolution that authorizes and directs the issuance of not to exceed in the aggregate the principal amount of $4,650,000, first, for Rankin County Mississippi Tax Exempt Tax Increment Limited Obligation Bonds Series 2014 A, which is the outlets of Bloomfield Project, the 2014 A Bonds, to raise money for the purpose of paying the cost of the outlet at Bloomfield tax exempt infrastructure improvements and paying cost of issuance for the 2014 A Bonds and for related purposes. The second item is for Rankin County Mississippi taxable tax increment limited obligation Bonds Series 2014 B, same definition, to raise money for the purpose of paying the cost of the outlets at Bloomfield taxable infrastructure improvements and paying the cost of issuance for the 2014 B Bonds and for related purposes. Again, if you have any questions about that resolution, we have bond counsel present who's now been retained.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? Can you explain just a little bit on the A and B, why we did it in two series? Just, I know it's, I remember us doing it, but I just don't remember exactly why.
Well, under federal tax laws, only certain infrastructure improvements can be reimbursed to the developer, for that is going into the public domain, in other words, the streets, drainage, the type of stuff that the City of Pearl or other public entities will own and operate. Your TIF plan is also authorized to do parking, which state law authorizes, but it's on the private property for the outlet, so we cannot do that on a tax exempt basis under federal tax laws for the bonds, so that will be taxable. The amount is not to exceed 4,650,000. We're still trying to analyze how much is gonna be taxable, how much is tax exempt, but it will not exceed this number. Very likely it's gonna be smaller than this before we finish that analysis, so that's the difference, Greg.
Okay.
Some of it we can't do in a federal tax law.
Right.
And get it be taxable.
Gotcha, okay. Good explanation, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Louis.
Any more questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Okay, that finishes up your part, Mr. Slay, Ms. Laura, Ostrick County Administrator.
Thank you. The first item I have is a request approval to enter into a contract for the community development department with graphite payments for credit card processing services for in-house payments. This is the same system that Judy uses, the same company, and I understand from Renee there's not gonna be any, any charge to us either, and it'll work the same as they do over that, and Judy's office, this will be for anybody coming to Renee's office that wants to use a credit card to pay.
Wait, okay. I'm glad you brought that up, so they'll be able to use a credit card to pay in your office now?
No.
Okay. Can they, and so that means they can pay online too?
That will be with EGOV, that will be separate, but we are working on that also so that there will be an online.
All right, that's gonna question brought to them, okay, good. So we, I can say we're working on that?
Yes, we are.
Well, some of the stuff that I have in building department, we're not gonna do everything payable online by credit card, except for cause of the way they structured. We don't have the software to calculate what building permit would be.
What about your, what about the things, I guess mainly what I've heard, things like this rental inspection?
I will try to do the utility permit, like maybe the contractor bond base, something that's a specific step rate.
Okay.
So we have, we have some things we can do.
By any, on the rental, where they're, they're having to come in and each, every so often after they have rental inspection, will they be able to do that online?
That's what we're shooting for.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Not just rental.
All of them.
Yeah, but I mean, I know that's what I've been hearing mostly on.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Any questions?
Yeah, do we need to have that in our office too? For, what do we do currently for people come in and rent our facilities?
We're working on that, Jay. Our only problem with that is the rental portion won't be a problem, the deposit portion that we require, we don't actually cash those checks, we hold them. If they do it online, then we would have to cash the check, well, we wouldn't cash it, what it, we'd, you know, go into our account, and so if they clean up and do everything they're supposed to, we have to refund it. Now, we have talked about going ahead and setting it up that way, them understanding that that money would clear their account, and y'all giving like a blanket order for me to refund the money, contingent upon the fact that they meet all the criteria that they were supposed to. And the reason we do that is so that we could issue a check at that time to them and not have to wait until the upcoming docket or an upcoming meeting that we could get the money back to them.
I'm sure there's a workaround for that, that we can make it easier, 'cause that's gonna be a hassle for everybody.
Well, that's the only thing.
Including the customer.
That's the only thing we can come up with unless they have-
Could we not do a document that whenever they go to agree to it, that they agree if they don't leave it in this certain condition, then we will charge them and have their credit card information and charge it?
Yeah, but certainly that could be a way to solve this, Joe. The only thing that bothers me about taking credit card information is that we may obligate ourselves to certain of those privacy and disclosure requirements. I'd wanna check with Rusty about that. Anytime you maintain credit card data on somebody, that's an issue.
Mm-huh.
You got your PCI compliance stuff that automatically gets triggered, so I'd want Rusty to help us evaluate whether that's something that is worth-
Well, maybe you can come up with a better suggestion then.
Because our only other way would be make them to, you know, do their deposit in still a check form and allow their payment in another, and there's, that's sort of defeating the purpose when they're still gonna do a check. And that's the only thing that we take in our office that would be, whether it's the, one at the reservoir or green field or, you know, multipurpose or anything like that.
Right.
But we're trying to solve it, we're just not quite sure how to do that yet.
The thought process with you guys is, you know, authorizing on the, on the front end, the immediate reimbursement of the amount, I think we could then take that payment, Joe. And what we were trying to avoid is a situation where we were constantly having to come back before you guys with every 15 agenda having an item on it that authorizes a refund of thus and so for the deposit.
Well, I was trying to think of a better way for our staff not to have to do that every time.
Not to have to refund it?
Yeah.
That's, that's always gonna be a hassle. Anytime you have a rental like that, you have to have a deposit of, just in case, for the cleanliness or whatever, if they tear anything up or whatever, so it's a-
Something we could possibly try is collect enough information on the front end, I don't know how many-
That we could go get it from them?
Yeah, I don't know how many situations we've gotten into, Ms. Janice could probably help us, but where, where folks who've used the facilities did not recover their deposit 'cause they made a mess.
You know, Craig, you might, Craig, you might check with, and I don't really know exactly how they do it, but motels, you know, because they have to, you basically have to do kind of the same with them.
Give them your credit card.
Give them your credit card, and they charge it to your charge, yeah. We thought about even building in the deposit, you know, a non-refundable 99, but what's gonna happen there is people know if they're not gonna get their money back, they're not even gonna attempt to.
No, they won't even touch it. They're thinking, they're paying for it, so they're gonna clean it up.
That's right, they'll stop paying for it, so they won't even, in fact, it might make matters worse.
It will.
Surely that we can come up with some way to do it.
We will, we'll come up with some way, we just have to look at it a little bit longer.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Have we voted on this?
Yes, I have a, I will have a motion in second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
The next item I have is to accept the CPI, the Consumer Price Index calculations effective October the 1st of 14 for waste management residential waste collection at a rate of 1.70. That will take our house amount to 11.05.
This goes in effect last month?
That, you know, one year that came with the two-year, but this is built into their contract and-
Well, if they miss it, then they just miss it, right? I mean-
You know, they came-
Right, we never should have approved that.
Well, I agree, I agree with that.
So I'm asking, do we have an opportunity to not pay this one now? Did they miss another one?
It's in their contract that they can get it every year.
You could, you could refuse to do it, but they're going to-
No issue regarding.
Easily be able to correct that, that's a practical obligation that we have.
You just had to wait till they skip it again. Yeah, that's why I asked them, they didn't skip it this time.
Right.
Okay, all right.
No, it's just a little after October 1.
Do I have a motion to approve? Got a motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
The next item is approval of professional services contract amendment for Rankin County Community FEMA Safe Room Extended Construction Schedule with A2H and authority to sign the letter of agreement. Authority to pay A2H invoice for architectural services from April to October of 2014 for a total of $26,172.60 and authority to issue a check. The contract originally ended in March, then there was an extension period to complete the building, so that was past the scope of their services, and they did work after that time. We got in August from the city a letter of occupancy, so they want an amendment done to pay them from the time that they originally ended through the extended period, which was August. And then October, they came and did some more work with us, and they'd like to amend the contract to include that time for their services. We are gonna try to get this reimbursed. We still are under on the project, there's still money left, so we are going to submit this as a reimbursable item.
Are we through with this now?
Only to the extent, the next one that we have, Jay, is on the generator, what we're working on now.
Look, can't we do that without?
Possibly.
Possibly, yes.
I mean-
Possibly.
Possibly.
What, what were they doing? Just, what are we paying for here?
It's attached in the schedule of the work that they had to do.
They had some additional work?
Yeah, they don't, they don't say a lot about it in here, it's actually D instead of C, C and D are backwards here, but this is actually the one that falls under D, the A2H. They've just got additional scope of services, the work that they said that they had to do while construction was still going on. They prepare all the, you know, paperwork with what was Coleman-Hammons, they do all that and make sure that they have all of their material together, and they have to sign off on their packet information and get it reimbursed, you know, turned in for reimbursement. And so it's just extended scope of their work that they did. And then they had a little bit of reimbursable expenses, travel and stuff.
So do we have another one coming, is this our final or do we have another one?
This will be the final on this portion, the one below it here has to do with the generator for what they've already done on that, but this should be all that we have coming from them unless they do help us on, with the generators, and y'all can approve that upfront, what we do, how we handle that.
I'd just soon cut them out.
Why do they need to help us with, to get a generator?
It has to do with the design of the building itself and the, the, how you would connect this portable generator into the system that's in place.
Right.
They have an electrical engineer on staff who designed all of those generator systems.
And to make sure that it works properly.
But really, isn't it just basically, if we want any chance of getting reimbursed, we have to go through them? And that it?
We, we did find out though, on the, depending on what method we use on the generator, it's possible that we only use the electrical company that actually did the work.
Yeah.
Not their electrician to do any engineering portion on it.
Right.
Just the company that we use, that, that's an alternate that we talked about.
And the method of, the solution that they provided, at least in the initial conversations that I've had with the sheriff, the suggestion is that, that we may be able to handle that without using A2H necessarily to design it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Okay, the next item I have is approval of professional services contract amendment for Rankin County Community FEMA Safe Room Generator Review with A2H and authority to sign the letter of agreement, and authority to pay A2H for their invoice on architectural services on generator review and the additional scope of the service for a total of $3,183.65 and authority to issue the check. This is where we met with them, and they actually did have their engineer go in and give us the scenarios that we could use on the generator.
Got a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And we will come back to you before we do anything on the generator to decide whether we would go through theirs or if we would do it on our own.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That's all I have. Under additional business, there's just a discussion that we need to have.
On the FEMA safe room ribbon cutting?
Yeah, about ribbon cutting.
Okay.
With these payments that we're going to make, we are basically, other than the generator, we are through with everything. We are, we have our letter of occupancy, we're in there. The sheriff did even open it up, you know, the last weather event we had. He opened it up, not many showed up, but it is ready now, and we're buying our supplies, and it's ready for any weather event that we have to be used.
Will it be, is it, when we start trying to advertise it or let people be aware that it could be rented for, you know, whatever, prom?
Well, I, I think that there is going to be an article that Chuck is doing, and he's gotten with the, I talked to him, and then he's gotten with Randy also out there to talk about, you know, what we do. So that'll be one, one method, you know, for a weather event. I know that they send it out, you know, via what, email, text message, you know, and different things like that, that it'll be ready, but I think just basically also anything that we have a ribbon cutting, you know, the publicity on that will let people know that it is open.
Yeah. Well, I think a lot of people realize it's open, but I don't know that they would realize that it's available for.
Other purposes.
Yeah, other purposes, yeah.
Right. I think you're going to be doing a story on that, too, Craig.
We didn't talk about that.
Oh, you didn't?
Separate story.
Okay. All right.
And that would basically be through the sheriff, since they're handling it, they would be the ones that.
Point of contact.
Just secure.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
But basically, I guess we just need to talk about a potential date that we can have this. We have, we'll have to check, you know, we would like to get the governor there, since he was, you know, influential on getting it and all, and several key people, and so.
Maybe a little warm weather. Warm day.
Well, I think we need to do it before spring.
Yeah, I think we're very sooner the better, because people are using it. We're going to do ribbon cutting next year.
Kick them out.
We'll look into it and get back to you and see what dates that we potentially have to.
Yeah, please, look at those, the several dates, and get it to us, and that way we can get our, get Janice to get that calendar together for everyone.
We'll do it.
Where are we on, I guess, two things? The, you know, we talked about the, what was it? The use of the old JVC. How's that?
For the drug or for the M doc?
It was.
DOC.
DOC, yeah.
Well, we haven't heard back from MDOC.
Yeah, well, I didn't see, we have to worry about some of that now.
Someone over there, and they're excited about it, so I think we're, it's going to happen.
The two people that came that Craig and I did a walkthrough with them, they were very.
Right.
Excited about the potential to be able to use.
Well, I don't think we have one obstacle to worry about anymore. So I was asking, where are we on that? Another question I have, where are we on the multipurpose building as far as somebody?
I have that to bring up today in executive session under personnel.
Okay. Well, should have given you that wink.
All right. Any more additional business to be discussed before we possibly leave executive session? Okay? Got a motion to discuss.
I'd like to motion to discuss the need to go in executive session.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
So move.
Second by Mr. Morrison.
Second, yeah.
Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Good to have all of you all.
How are you, sir?
I'm not talking so much next time, you know.
I love to talk. Have this good, strong talking voice.
Six o'clock, right?
Six, six thirty somewhere.
We can't be late. Yeah. Yeah, but I know he's, I'm saying, but I know he's, I'm saying, I've been contacting him for now, so I look for an online study.
Six o'clock.
I don't, you know, I haven't given him much time, because it's very comfortable. It is. I mean, I can't imagine anybody complaining about it. Complaining about it, because even, the only thing I can see is if somebody likes the, like me, and they're all three hundred bucks, and that's the only thing. And also, I need to ask you, too, he educated me. Lucy, appreciate it. Appreciate it. Good to see you, too. He educated me, basically what he said, I figured how to get around all this, as long as I keep it up for four acres, still, and keep saying, I'm making late. I keep, I keep being exempted. Is that true? Because he keeps saying, he said, oh, I'm good. But he, okay, but he's planning on, he's already, he's already, he said.
How are you doing?
Exceeded my four acres, or getting close to it now.
Well, he'll have to come back.
He needs to, but if he comes back, he's going to keep saying, I'm just making late. Which, what he's doing, maybe what he's doing.
Unless that looks like it.
This turn didn't be, just like he landed something like, he had three hundred trucks running down there, like, needed it, you know. How would I do that? I know, but if they started, like, white, thirty, thirty thousand. I just need to leave him open.
He probably has an expiration date with it, too.
The reason I said that, he told me what I'm doing, that he wanted those big projects to happen. He said a couple.
Hey, the guy's supposed to be aware of fixing that. I don't want to be heady. I'm going to take some things, let the sheriff.
I think I do that.
Problem with those, and the ones that do the most damage to the roads, they drive in, they bring in the trucks, it's got that, they can do that, but that's what they do.
I don't miss a problem, I just hate to. If he opened it up, if something just.
I'm afraid that into that.
I'm afraid that into that.
I'm afraid that into that.
Will that, if we go with like two to a thousand dollars, is that?
Get so many out in a day's time, that'll stop them.
What, since they like dark?
Okay, well, never mind, it will be fine.
When they get to State Highway, well, Interstate, they will run it.
All right, well.
Well, that's where we did that, work out.
Yeah.
We're getting closer, man.
Yeah, we are on the EGUB. I just didn't want to sign it. It seems like it's going to each department to sign until I can get with Rusty and pull it all in. I want to know what's going on, then getting each department to sign their.
No, because I wouldn't personally bother them.
Release or whatever it is, you know.
Part of the law.
No, I don't think so. That's what's.
I just think, right, I just think.
I don't think so. I think it ought to be one for all of what we're doing.
We just had a. They like the dark.
So Larry, how come the county quit doing any services?
Like I was saying, from when.
Liability and cost.
And lights, just set up all along this night.
We're still like.
I don't think, if you think that, I've been locked anyway.
Okay, well, I'll get that written.
I had to stand in line for it.
The other thing you want to do is when you get to Cindy and Jackson, and you cross that line, you know, you're not a priority. So where they are has contract in Cindy Jackson with the county. I remember that, they remember that. We look at ours, it's in there.
Probably with a hospital.
Back in there, you'd be number two on the line, you'd be number one.
And we definitely don't have hospitals here to take care of everything.
Not the trauma center, certainly. I think it'd be a big liability for you, and it's going to be a costly adventure to be going, you know.
You're right, but I didn't know if we could do it and actually, you know, do, provide better service if they can't get our coverage where they can.
I think what you did today, that we provide a better service, because a lot, a good portion of what you do is transport, it ties up to emergency, you don't have to have a paramedics for that, you just have to have a, you have a basic.
I've heard that's their casualty, or all.
Oh, yeah, transport, transport is a casualty. It's kind of like liquor in the restaurant.
I thought that was smooth, man.
Hey, liquor.
We ready?
Yep.
Where's Jared?
Restaurant.
Hey, Jared? Do we need Jared?
We got four.
Come on in.
I've got an item that is potential litigation. I've got an item that is potential property acquisition, and I think Ms. Laura's got the personnel.
Make a motion, go into executive session for those three reasons.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.